Good afternoon. Today is September 2nd. 1:00 PM, we'll call the Deferred Comp Advisory Committee Meeting to order.
We'll begin with roll call. Ms. Goodman?
Here.
Mr. Wieland?
Present.
Ms. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Kiyokam?
Present.
Mr. Gardia?
Present.
Ms. Regallo?
Here.
The record will show that Mr. Hopkins and Mr. Wolcamp are both absent today.
Thank you, Ms. Strange. Next is public comment.
We do not have any public comments. Thank you.
And I've done it again, then two meetings in a row skipped right over those minutes. So I will now call for approval of the minutes for the quarterly meeting of May 29.
I did have a minor friendly update maybe in regards to the investment policy. I think I did bring up the idea of removing it, but then Kathy has comments regarding it. So we decided to leave it alone until we review it at another time. So history should still be in there until, I guess, until we review it one more time.
I'm sorry, Fonse.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Page three. So I made a motion to remove the history. Kathy had some comments regarding it and just kind of moved the item forward. I said, hey, let's keep it there and then we'll take a look at that section again later. According to the minutes right now, it reads that they would remove the history section, which was unanimous, we passed. But it was amended during that time.
All right. So we will have it reflect that the motion was amended and we would look at the history section at the future meeting.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I hear a motion with that amendment?
Fonse, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next on our agenda from Nationwide, John Stegall and the Quarterly Review and Field Update.
Thank you and good morning to everyone. I'm sorry, good afternoon to everyone. We usually meet in the mornings. So we'll start with our report that looks like this, and thank you for printing these out for us. We really, really appreciate it.
Can I ask you to pull your microphone just a little bit closer? Thank you.
All right. We'll start on page two. That's okay. So this is just the balance sheet. This is at the end of June, so June 30th dated. The top row is where the quarter started on April 1st. And then throughout the rows on this report, we have contributions in, we have distributions, we have fees and loans, as well as a gain and loss for the quarter. You can see that gain-loss number was $40 million, and so that's what the plan grew by in that three-month period. Your plans, both of them, ended the quarter at $634 million, and we started just under $600 million overall. So pretty nice growth. We'll jump a couple of pages to page five, and this is just the overview. So this is a snapshot of all of the main metrics of your plan through that quarter. The next page, six, we'll start with participation. So participation, if you look on the upper left, your plan at the end of June finished with 7,641 participants overall, and those are unique in the plan. There's $78,000 average account balance, so very, very nice number. And then as you go to the lower left, the average number of investments, 2.83, so almost three investments. Then on the middle of page six and the bottom is a wheel chart. So it shows that 52% of the assets in your plan are held by participants who are still employed with the county. And then we have 46% are terminated. Then to the right of that, we have Roth usage. So Roth is your after-tax money type. And there's about almost $12 million in Roth, which is an option for any participant that has signed up. They can use Roth or pre-tax or both or none. And there's 1,353 participants who have selected Roth. Then on the next page, optional strategies. We talked about Roth already. A little bit below that, we have self-directed brokerage on the lower left. So there are 12 participants in the 457 plan of about 2.2 million that have elected to invest their money outside of their core options. And then you can see the average balance, just to the right of that, is around $186,000 per participant who has money with Schwab. Moving on to page eight, contributions, some money in for the quarter. So this is a snapshot. If you look right in the middle of the page, under current quarter, that is the money that came into Nationwide from your participants. So the top-line salary contributions, so we received about $6.3 million, almost $6.4 in new deferrals. We also received some rollovers and transfers, some account splits, some employer contributions, and then self-directed SDVA, that's money coming back from the Schwab self-directed brokerage account. Sometimes money moves back. If they want to take a distribution, then they need to cash up and move it over back to their core funds. And then finishing up this page, on the lower right, we have the various salary contributions by assets. And so when we receive new money from your participants, 50%, almost 51% of new money is going into a target date fund. And that's a pretty good number, so we're happy with that. So your participants are very well diversified there. So again, about half the money is flowing into a target date. Then you can see the other percentages, about 5% going into bond funds, fixed assets and cash receiving less than 15% or less than 15 cents on each new dollar. So they're taking a little bit of risk, investing in both equities and fixed income with their new contributions. And then not much else going into the other asset classes. Again, most of it going into target dates, and then some going into fixed and then large cap, which is pretty common for most plans. Moving on to distributions. So again, in the top middle of the page, current quarter, this is money out. So we saw money flowing in. We also have money flowing out each quarter. We had about $6 million in rollovers and transfers out of the plan, which is categorized below under the top five, external payees receiving assets. We don't track, well, we do track everything, but we don't list everything on our report. So we have the top five companies receiving money from your participants when they leave. You can see where the money is going, and then how many of these are going to the top five. We also had money for retirements, which are just simply distributions, and then for other various reasons. So not much to report there, but we do share all of the distribution stats as well as incoming stats. Any questions or comments? All right. Moving on to page 10, upper left, we have assets. So this is a list of where the money currently sits in your plans. You all see this in the HIAS report as well. So we looked at money in, this is current assets. So asset allocation, those target date funds hold about 24% of your assets. So it's getting 50% of new money, but current assets, it's right around a fourth of your plan. And then about a fourth in fixed assets and cash, and then about a third in large-cap stock mutual funds. The next few pages, we just have a list of all of your investment options categorized by assets. We also have participant lists for each of those funds, so you know how many participants hold those types of funds. So we'll skip that. We'll move to page 13, which is loans. And on the upper left of page 13, loans, we have 3.2 million in active loan balances. So that will eventually, at some point, be paid back. We have 360 active loans on the books. We have 41 new loans that were issued last quarter, 21 were closed. So loans are growing a little bit by about a positive 20 on average. So that's kind of a net positive 20 for last quarter. And then on the upper right, you have the current loan average. That's right around $9,000. So when your participants borrow, they're not borrowing a lot, so we're seeing an increase in loans slightly, but the average loan amount is still fairly small. Questions about loans? Yeah. Not a lot of activity there. And then wrapping up the 457 plan on page 14 with your enablement and engagement stats. At the very top row is e-delivery. We look at these stats each quarter. So e-delivery are the folks that have opted out of paper completely. About 73% of those have. Online accounts, we have 67%. We'd like to get that higher. We will over time. Online distributions, about 2/3 of your distributions are occurring online. About 1/3, the traditional method, through a form, which is great. That number is continually growing as well. Beneficiaries and emails on file, both really solid, over 90% for both. So we like to see that. And then online enrollment year-to-date, so 31% of your enrollments are being done online. The other, the rest are being done, the traditional methods, through forms. And then lastly, on the very bottom row, we have my investment planner is free online investment advice, if you're interested. We had five participants take advantage of that. That's on our website. And then my income and retirement planner, that is our software, which gives you a retirement readiness score. We've had almost 3,000 participants utilize that software since we've been your record keeper, and that number continually grows every day. Just about wrapped up, so I wanted to move on, just to talk about your 401A for just one moment. I won't go through all the slides. I'll just talk about the plan summary. So on page 16, very similar to your 457 plan, we have your beginning balance at the top, your ending balance at the bottom, and your activity throughout. So the plan started with $32 million, finished with $35.5 million. And then the overview page, on the next page, it shows we had one new enrollment. We had some contributions of around $0.5 million come in the second quarter. We had distributions out about $156,000. 146 participants in the 401A. The average balance is very high. You can see that. It's almost a quarter million per participant, and no money rolling in or transferring in. So I did that very quickly, so I'll pause, see if there's any questions about the data. Brenda's also going to give some comments about the field update and let you know what's going on here locally. So if no questions, I'll turn it over to Brenda.
All right. All right. So just to kind of give you the scoop on what's happening out and about, I am here to offer that. So we do our quarterly presentation, and last quarter, we had 171 people from the county participate. So that is always fantastic to see that engagement. People are not just starting to save for retirement, but they're interested in getting the education so that they can really use to their highest and best this product and program. One of the most fun things that I did last month was I got to go to the retiree luncheon out at Mickey's Grove. That was fun. We did a Living Well in Retirement presentation to 97 retirees. And so it kind of brought them current and up-to-date on what the plan has to offer for them, should they come back part-time or per diem, or things that are important to them, like changes in their required minimum distribution ages, social security updates. And it was pretty well received. I got an email back from Michelle Scott saying, "I missed it. I wished I hadn't." She set it up for me but wasn't able to attend. So she did respond and say, "Hey, can you send me some materials just so I can kind of see what the discussion was?" So I did follow up with that. So hopefully I'll get another opportunity in the future to meet with that group. Maybe something bigger like their Christmas luncheon. But really a fun day, and it was really great to see people stay active and engaged in retirement. Any questions? Okay, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next, Retirement Income Builder discussion.
Thank you very much. So we wanted to bring this back on the agenda for this particular quarter. We've discussed this a couple of times. We have a special guest, Eric Linsky, from our corporate office, who is a product expert in Retirement Income Builder. And so this was asked to be put back on the agenda. The committee approved it, I want to say, two quarters ago. I know that there were some questions around the paperwork. We did get that signed. But there wanted to be a little bit more discussion around the agreements. And so, again, we'll kind of open it up for discussion. I'm not sure how we should lead that off. But I know that there were some questions that were opposed and some, you know, just more follow-up with respect to the product. So we thought we would have Eric come out, once again, give you just an overview of what that service is very briefly, and then we can take any of those questions that were brought up since the last meeting, if that works.
Sure. That sounds good. And just for the benefit of the rested advisory committee, you know, subsequent to finding, signing off on the paperwork, I think there were some issues that were raised through Vincent and his team. And I will let Vincent explain a little bit better, in better detail, what the concern was, as he will do it much better than I will, and I will not, so I don't confuse you all. And there have been some meetings with Nationwide and with HIAS or Morgan Stanley, what we're calling Vincent now, to try to kind of make sure we understand those implications before we move forward to implementing it for the plan participants. So Vincent, if you don't mind.
Thank you. I'm not loud enough. No. Thank you, Greg. Yes. So essentially what happened was Eric did a great job explaining the benefits of this product, the features tied to it. There was a vote to adopt it. Upon further research, our analytical team did take a look at the paperwork and had some questions. We have had a number, more than one, calls to try and air our concerns, not only with Nationwide but with the county here. We still have some concerns around due diligence, around guarantees, that sort of thing. And again, despite the multiple times of conversations, we still have a little bit of pause. That's not to say that this is the final say, obviously, because as fiduciaries, you have a say in the decision. And so our stance is just simply, if you're okay with the paperwork, let's go ahead and move forward. If you're not, let's go ahead and hold tight until there is a certain level of comfort around, as I said, just the due diligence on the team, the guarantee, and that sort of thing.
Can you share some of the concerns that?
Yeah. So essentially, the team, our analytical team, was part of these calls. They weren't available today, and I was telling Jennifer this, and I told them that when I first started here, I worked with participants similar to Brenda. And as I became a consultant, I always said, any recommendation that I make, I have to be able to explain it across the table to somebody. And this might be an indictment on me, or my level, or lack of expertise, is I still don't quite get the concerns at that level or the answers. And so to answer bluntly, not really. The questions that have been raised and answered and still raised with concerns, I just still don't understand about a lot of the concepts. And I think that, to me, is somewhat of a red flag. And that's where, again, I go back to my team, but also the team here that's going to approve or otherwise bless the documents that they're okay with it.
I'm assuming he's going to give a presentation regarding the documents?
Yeah, so.
And then, it might be difficult, Vincent, but how much longer are we, I mean, after he gives the explanation, how much longer do you think it would get you to get comfortable? I know it's hard to give a timeframe depending on what it is. I mean, what kind of delay, what kind of delay? Are we looking at three months, a month? What do you think?
Well, speaking for our analytical team?
Yes.
We're not there. Whether, I think we do, at least one question around due diligence is still outstanding. I think either there's going to be some movement on Nationwide's part, because that's how it was conveyed to us, that like, let's understand the concerns, and that was the call with our team. Whether there's movement or change in language in the offering documents, that I will leave that up to this side of the table. But I can't give timing, because right now, we're not there the way things stand.
Yeah. So I can add a little bit of light, and I don't want to speak for Fiduciary Consulting Group, but essentially, the biggest concern was essentially sort of the longevity outlook of it. It was my interpretation, like what if 10, 20, 30 years down the road, Nationwide were to terminate its agreement with the trust company, GTC? And so I think that was probably the biggest concern around the contractual language that's written into the offering memorandum. So I do have some responses to that. Some other concerns that were brought up just from our last call with another entity was potentially sort of the guarantee, what that actually means, and I can speak to that as well. And then the lack of state guarantee association, which I can speak to as well. So those are, through the calls that we've been a part of, those are kind of the three different, I would say, focus points that Fiduciary Consulting Group has brought up as concern, and certainly I can speak to those as well. But probably not a bad idea to kind of refresh the committee on the product itself, correct? And John, do they have copies of this?
I don't believe it was passed out this quarter.
Okay. Seen it a couple of times. This was the document we went over during the approval process a few quarters ago. I do have a few that I can repass out, because I'll be using this to speak to, if that makes sense. I have a few more, too, if anybody would like them. Thanks, Brenda. So this is the product profile. This was the document that we went over a few quarters ago when the committee voted to adopt. And I'll turn your attention to page two. We call it this kind of mountain climber chart, because I think this does a pretty good summary of explaining what this is. And essentially, this is an investment option that the committee can add to your lineup for participants to choose from. This originally came up through conversations that Brenda was having with participants, particularly around the need for an investment within the plan that generates income, but also a way for the county to look at it from an asset retention standpoint as well. And I can let her, you know, Brenda can certainly chime in with the conversation she has had. But if you look at this mountain chart, this is essentially a series of target date funds. So it's very similar to the T-Roe Price Target Date Fund series that you have now, that you all are familiar with, that takes a, you know, has potential for growth and takes an investment strategy based on a participant's age. This works the exact same way. So for everyone under the age of 47, it's going to look very similar to the T-Roe Price Target Date Funds that you have now, with that similar growth potential. Starting at 47, though, is when it starts to look a little bit different. Still maintains that same potential for growth that you typically see with a target date fund. But starting at 47, it starts to capture the account's high value called the high watermark. And it does that on a quarterly basis between the ages of 47 and 65. So basically, at the end of each quarter, it looks at the participant's balance in Retirement Income Builder. And if it's higher than it was previous quarters, they lock that amount in as their high watermark. So if you think about it, they essentially have 72 opportunities, you know, quarterly, between 47 and 65, to capture their highest account balance possible. Now, starting at 65, they can elect to start to receive income, and they will receive 6% of that captured high watermark every year for the rest of their life. So they're essentially turning their 457 or 401A savings into a stream of lifetime income. Now, as they're drawing their balance down, if their balance ever draws down to zero, they still will receive 4.5% of that captured high watermark for as long as they live. So if you look at this chart, and it doesn't actually show real numbers, but I'll use real numbers. So this person, this individual, started capturing their high watermarks at age 47. They locked in their high watermark, which is their highest account balance, at $550,000. So starting at 65, they elected to receive income, which again is 6% of that captured high watermark, which in this case is 33. high watermark, which in this case is $33,000. So they have essentially turned their 457 or 401A into a stream of $33,000 every year that they can plan for and rely on. Now, in the case, over time, if their balance draws down to zero, and this is the insurance component, they will still receive 4.5% of that $550,000, which is $24,750. Compare that to somebody who's not in Retirement Income Builder. They draw their account down to zero, whether it's the day after they retire or 30 years later, it's done. It's gone, and no longer has any benefit to them in retirement. So this is a way for them to ensure that these accounts will still generate income even after the balance goes down to zero, if it goes down to zero. So, a couple of features. Thank you, Brenda. It's liquid, so if a participant goes into it, decides for whatever reason they want to get out of it, they absolutely can. They can exchange it out into any other investment, and that includes even after income has started. So they're not locked into it in any way. If they do, or I should say, when they pass away, if there's any remaining balance to the penny, it gets passed on, passed on to their beneficiaries. So that works just like it would with any other investment. And the other thing I'll point out, too, there, is that from the county's perspective, they leave their money with the county in the plan until they start taking withdrawals. So it's a way for the county to retain assets as well, so you're not seeing retirees automatically move their money out to go and find that advisor that might put them into an annuity. So if you think of it from an asset retention standpoint, it serves that purpose also. The other thing that Brenda mentioned is that there is a joint life option, and you can see this on bottom of page three. So if the participant wants to receive lifetime income on their life and their spouse's life, they absolutely can choose that option as well. And then, the last thing that I want to highlight is at the bottom of page four, which is the cost. And so, you can see, for anyone under the age of 47, they pay nine basis points or .09%. For anyone over the age of 47, when they're starting to capture those high watermarks, they pay .20% or 20 basis points, which I believe is about half the cost of the T-Roe Price series that you have now, which is an actively managed series. This is a passively managed series. So a different investment style, and the cost reflects that. So that's essentially the solution in a nutshell. That's the experience that a participant will have. They'll view, they're having conversations with Brenda, they'll have the T-Roe Price Target Date Fund option, actively managed. Then they'll have this option, passively managed, less expensive, protects against market volatility, and also can turn the savings into a stream of lifetime income. So it's essentially, the committee is essentially deciding on whether they want their participants to have that choice. So that's the solution. And we can certainly go into the contractual stuff that Vince alluded to, but I first want to see if there's any questions on the solution itself.
I guess I could see why Vince has some concerns. I mean, you kind of said it at first, so, let me try walking back. So, at 50, at 50, at 500,000 in my account, I could lock it in at that time. At 52, it comes, it becomes 600,000, I could say, hey, I'm locking it in at that time. And then, when I retire, it becomes, acts as an annuity. I know you said it wasn't an annuity, but I guess my question would be on the backside, how are you guys investing and guaranteeing these items? I think that's probably the concern that I would like to know.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, the money stays invested, so even though they lock that high watermark in, and that's what the income is derived from, that income base, the money still stays invested, so they're able to still see growth even after income has started. So it never comes out of the market, essentially, it stays in there. But to your question, the other aspect of this is that, you know, with a traditional target date fund, it's typically an allocation between equities and fixed income. As people get older, the target date fund gets gradually more conservative by shifting some assets into fixed income. This works the same way, but instead of fixed income, this uses a fixed indexed annuity as part of the overall allocation. And the reason it does that is because that fixed indexed annuity is where the 4.5 guarantee is built in, that's where the insurance component is built in. So as a participant is buying into it, they're essentially buying shares of the insurance component. So that's how we, as an insurance company, and Nationwide is one of two insurers on the solution, that's how we're able to maintain that 4.5 guarantee if the balance ever runs out to zero. So, is that, makes sense? Okay. Yeah, and I think, I would say that, again, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Vince and his team, but I think that the FIA component is an innovative concept in the industry, in target date funds. And I think a lot of the origins of the questions that they had was with the FIA itself, and what that means and the longevity of it. Is that accurate or fair to say?
Yeah, I think portability was an issue, less so for me, more so for our analysts, but that was an issue. It was the language in the contract in terms of the guarantors being able to walk away. I think that term was used very loosely on our end, but yeah, it just seems like the offering document or documents seemed less than clear, or there was a lot of, back to my point concerned, yeah.
Yeah, so, essentially, so this is not a Nationwide product. This is a product that's owned by a company called GTC. So they're the trust company that oversees this. And a big concern, I think, of fiduciary consulting group was, okay, well, it's essentially a third party. What happens if Nationwide terminates their contract with GTC? And, you know, that's a valid claim, because I think that's sort of a worst-case scenario, but it is something that could potentially happen in theory. But what's interesting about this product, and actually, the way it was designed, is that GTC, as the trust company, was, it was implemented that way to provide another oversight for the participant. So if Nationwide were to terminate with GTC, the money's not lost. They never had it with, under Nationwide's umbrella, it was under GTC's. So GTC is legally obligated to adhere to the commitments that they made to the participant. So I actually, I got a response from them. I was like, well, what does that mean exactly? Because in this scenario, Nationwide's out of the picture as the insurer, what would you do to the county's participants to make sure that they're protected in that situation? And this is, this is actually from them and their legal department. They said, in the case of a termination, we would work in good faith with each FIA provider. So essentially, I mentioned that Nationwide's one of two insurers, so they would work with the other insurer. And there's only two insurers at this time, they're looking at possibly adding a third. So they would go to the other insurers, is what they're saying there, to ensure continuation of lifetime income. We would work with the other insurance providers to see if they would assume the obligations of the terminating FIA contracts. So essentially, if Nationwide were to leave, they would go to the other insurer and say, will you pick up their obligation? In the event the other insurers would not assume obligations, GTC would go into the market to find an alternative solution. And in the event an alternative solution cannot be found, participants would receive the surrender value of the TDFs. So essentially, the money would never be lost. So it's their balance, it's their money. This is worst-case scenario, that the Retirement Income Builder would no longer be able to meet its obligations, the participant would then have to exchange into another investment. That's absolute worst-case scenario. But I like to compare it to another one of the concerns that fiduciary consulting group had, was with the lack of state guarantee. So.
Can I just stop you for one second?
I'm sorry.
My question.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
The surrender value. What is the value that's left remaining in their account?
Correct, yep. It would be the.
And so if they've already gone beyond the point where it was at a zero, there would be nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, which wouldn't be any different for anything else. They essentially have exhausted their account balance down to zero, but in that worst-case scenario, yes, they would potentially lose the 4.5% that they had been using. One quick note on that, is that, so the underlying fund manager with this is State Street, so very similar to T-Roe Price. For them to ensure that a participant continues to get the 6% for their life, they only need about a 4.2% rate of return. So it's highly unlikely, unless they were to take out additional withdrawals, that they would actually run out of money at an early age. A lot of models show maybe '90, '92 is when that insurance component would start to possibly kick in. So, sorry, yes, please stop me at any point if there are any questions, because I know I'm just, I'm just rambling.
Sorry, a couple of questions. It seems like a very interesting product. Has any other county included it in their 457 plan, within the California?
Yes, absolutely. So, this solution's been around for a couple of years. It's only been available at Nationwide for about 10 months, so we've added it to our platform last October, but it has been in the market for a couple of years. A plan does have to meet certain qualifications to be eligible. So I will say that not all of our plans are eligible for this solution. You guys obviously are. So, looking at the plans that are eligible, we have an anticipated 20 adoptions by year end, several of which here in the state of California. Greg, help me out here. Lake County would be one. I know there's some cities, City of Roanoke Park. We're working with.
Redwood City's approved.
Antioch.
Rio, I'll have to go look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a few in Southern California as well, Chula Vista, City of Palm Springs also. So, it's really a matter of us having the conversation like we are here today with those entities.
For Vincent or for Nationwide, are you aware of any similar programs that counties are leaving, that they have this option, and then they're dispersing of this option, they're separating from a similar program or plan?
There's a program from a totally separate style of solution, so that tries to solve for the same problem, right, lifetime income, from one of our competitors in the marketplace called Mission Square. I don't know if Vince, you know more about their pulling out of that product, but that was more the company themselves canceling their product for their inability to keep up with those promises. Is that a fair representation? I'll let you.
Yeah, I don't know necessarily about that, but you're absolutely right. This product or feature or services is gaining steam in the industry. Where we've seen the potential issue, and I mentioned it before, was around portability. Because, again, it's great as long as Nationwide's a provider, but that's not always going to be guaranteed. So where we've seen it is Mission Square, through an RFP or otherwise competitive process, has this product, and then is no longer the record keeper. And that's where it creates, again, I think our analytics, bless their soul, thinks of worst-case scenario, but that's their job. I think there's solutions in an RFP to accommodate that, but it does create a potential wrinkle that you or we, as fiduciaries, have to monitor to see, like, is the benefit worth the potential risk hypothetical or not down the road? So, that's really where we see, as opposed to an insurer unwinding it, it's more the record keeper isn't selected in the next round of RFPs.
You know, I think, I think as a committee, it's very difficult for us as a committee to say, hey, let's move forward with this, especially when Vincent is saying, hey, I need some more time to take a look at it. I think we could talk about the product and get familiar with it, but if his team isn't familiar with it, how do we become awesome experts and say, hey, let's go ahead and bypass Vincent and move on? I'd say it's very difficult. I mean, it is, Lake County is a very small county. If you said something like, one of the bigger counties, coastal counties or southern area counties, you know, you could kind of chat with them about it and kind of get more information with it, but that's where I'm at right now. Again, I have difficulty having one, having our advisors saying, hey, we're not saying no, we're just, we're just not there yet. So again, I don't see the rush to it, at least that's my opinion.
Yep, and just a couple of things, too, that I think are worth mentioning to Vince's concern around portability, and also your concern around other entities adopting it. So with the Secure Act 1.0, these solutions are designed to be portable, right? They are designed to go between record keepers. But the industry understands for that to be a real conversation. Other record keepers need to offer each other's products. And so you're seeing a really interesting shift in the industry, and I'm sure Vince can confirm this, where traditional competitors like Nationwide and Mission Square, for example, are actually working together to offer each other's products on their platform to help that conversation around portability. And so, right now, there are two other major record keepers that do add this solution in addition to Nationwide, and conversations are ongoing all time to ensure that other record keepers add it to help ease those concerns. It might take some time, but those conversations are happening. And actually, Mission Square is a great example, because they did terminate their proprietary product, they came to Nationwide, and now they offer one of our solutions on their platform instead of. So that's sort of a good example. The other I want to mention, too, is that those were just examples in California. We do have other large plans across the country that have added this. Many consulting firms have approved it as well. So, Vincent, and FCG, is that a fair acronym, FCG? It's kind of one I created in my mind, yeah, Hyus, okay.
It's always going to be Hyus.
Always going to be Hyus to me.
Okay. They're certainly doing their due diligence, and that's, and that's great, but we do work with many consulting firms that have approved it and are recommending it to their plans across the country.
So, I have heard what you said about, and I actually like the idea of the product. It sounds pretty new, as out in the industry. When we ask you, other counties using it, you gave us a couple of names, but it really sounds like you're in conversation with these people. So, and then you mentioned some people in other states or, you know, systems and other, again, it sounds like you're in conversation with these people. So, my direct question is, can you give us the names of a few counties and/or other entities that have actually adopted this? So if we wanted to talk to somebody, we could.
Hundred percent, yeah. And part of the reason it emits a long process, and you guys know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, even though they may have verbally added, we're in the process of completing the paperwork and whatnot. So, DeKalb County, Georgia, is one, and they're a suburb of Atlanta. Baltimore County, Maryland, is another one. Lansing, Board of Water and Light, not a county, but a huge entity in Michigan, is another one. Dakota County, Minnesota, suburb of Minneapolis, they're another one that have added it. City of Des Moines, Iowa is another one. And I'm naming plans that are similar in size to yours as well. So, yeah, absolutely. And like Greg mentioned, right now in California, there are some smaller ones that have added it, and we're in discussions with other plans as well.
Okay, no, I think it's a very positive product. Just want to make sure we're doing our diligence.
Can we just pull that stuff on our website? Like, anybody can go visit nrs3.com and put in state, put in plan.
So, when we have it available at an employer, for an employer, it's on their fund menu. So like, if you wanted to look up City of Lodi, they have something similar to this, but it's slightly more expensive, because they're a smaller plan. Sound King Mosquito has a more expensive option, but it works similarly to this, so it's kind of based on the plan size. So, we've added it to small and medium-sized plans in the area, and the participants really like it. And just to kind of share, I visited the hospital on the 20th, and as we were getting ready to roll this program out, I had mentioned it to a couple of people. And one is our director of medicine over there, and he had a financial advisor in his ear going, hey, bring a thousand, bring over a million dollars to me and put it in, into an annuity. And I said, well, wait a minute, we might have a solution for you. And I said, well, wait a minute, we might have a solution for you. So he was disappointed to hear that it's not quite ready for him yet, because he's ready to do something with that money and was really looking forward to having it here with us. I talked to another young man who's retiring from the hospital, and he's got a financial advisor going, he's only 56, and he's like, move the money over here to me, we're going to put your money in an IRA, but we're going to put $300,000 into an annuity. So for the director of medicine, it's about the piece where he can protect his spouse, right? It's got that joint payout. But for this younger man, no spouse, but he's worried about social security, and that's why he's putting his $300,000 into an annuity. And I told him, I said, you know, if you feel like you need to do that, even though we ran the numbers and he's going to be fine with his pension and everything, he wants that, that what-if money in there. The other money, I think I've talked to him into leaving it here for now, because they said, you know, if you take the rest of your money and put it over there, you lose your penalty-free access. So financial advisors are not having the conversations with the employees here about, oh, you're still in your 50s? You know, they're not thinking about whether or not they should or shouldn't move the money to them. They're like, bring everything to me, even though you're going to lose your penalty-free access. They're just, they're doing whatever it can. So there's a need in the marketplace for sure. I mean, back in the Hartford days, they tried to do it and it never got off the ground because they were kind of trying to do their own thing. And the fact that Nationwide has come up with something that not only we can offer for our plans, but we're sharing in the industry, I really am impressed with the fact that eventually this is going to, it's bound to happen. I know they're talking about it at the industry meetings and things like that, but it's just a matter of timing, and it's right place, right time is going to be different for different employers. So I'm just happy that we're having this conversation.
And I do want to thank Nationwide, HIAS, and the county team for the work on this. I do think, you know, if we can get to the point where we can resolve the questions and concerns, you know, it sounds like a great program to make available to our participants. But as you all advise me, I know I take seriously when we put something out to employees who are really depending on us to make good decisions on their behalf. So I would feel better if we could, you know, continue to work with HIAS and Nationwide and see if we can resolve the questions, working with council, and if we can, then be able to move forward. And I think we'd all feel better in that place, feeling that we're doing the right thing for our participants.
I don't know that we really need an action on that. Counsel, do we need a motion to bring that back when we're ready? So this advisory committee has already approved us having that, so I think it's a matter of the plan sponsor just doing the administrative steps needed in place, so. Thank you very much for the conversation, I appreciate it. All right, and so then at that, Vincent, we'll have you go through your report. Thank you.
Yep, I'm sorry. Thank you. No, thank you. Think I would learn. Back to this kind of mediocre-ish economy. Bottom left, you'll see gross domestic product abbreviated GDP. GDP is a measure of our economic activity. It tracks all the goods and services produced in the United States in any given year. Because of the percent sign, it's just the year-over-year change. You'll see the first quarter came in at negative 0.5, so for the first time in three years, there was a contraction in the economy. The good news is the second quarter advanced number came out at positive 3.0%. It was recently revised upward to 3.3%. So the second quarter number, which isn't in the book, is now 3.3%. But when you dig a little bit deeper, and we do, some of the things that are propping up the economy are us as consumers buying things with money we may not have. So not only is the credit card debt continually increasing, now we're seeing a little uptick in delinquencies. We're also seeing a success in companies called Klarna and Affirm. Anybody know what those companies do? Buy now, pay later. Those companies are doing really, really well. But nonetheless, the economy is in relatively good shape, at least as measured by GDP. Here's where it gets a little disconcerting. As I'm moving to the center, you'll see the inflation rate of 2.7 in June. It was actually 2.7 in July as well. And the Federal Reserve has an explicit target of 2%. And so in this stubbornly high interest rate environment, the odds of them on this data point alone lowering rates is almost nil. But they meet on the 17th of September, and there's a 90% chance they're going to cut because, as I move from center to right, the job numbers continue to weaken. In fact, you'll see the 4.1% is pretty healthy. A measure of full employment is an unemployment rate of 5%, but that June number ticked up to July at 4.2. So still relatively strong, but weakening, and that's what's prompting the Federal Reserve to generally cut rates by 25 basis points on the overnight. But I don't know if you saw the news around the weakening job numbers? No? So when those numbers were revised upwards, the administration thought that it was politically motivated. So what happened to the commissioner of the Bureau of Labor Statistics? What? You're fired, yes. Basically notoriously fired, the commissioner, Dr. Meckentfer, and so nonetheless dismissed of her role as the commissioner of the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So interesting news about the job numbers going forward. Now, a lot of people say the ADP number is a good substitute, but we'll see, because generally that tracks corporate jobs as opposed to corporate and government jobs en masse. So let's talk about the markets. I talked about the good to really, really good markets. Flip ahead to page two. The bottom half of page two focuses on some different asset classes or indexes representing those asset classes. The second line down, you'll see the U.S. fixed income is measured by the aggregate or ag. Historically, the bond market averages 3%, 3.5% a year. Take a look at the 12-month number, up over 6% for the year. So pretty phenomenal numbers as the longer-term rates have dropped. It's propped up the performance in the ag. And that year-to-date number of 4.02% as of last week, 5.1%. So nice continuation of the bond market rally. And then the good news continues with the U.S. stock market. So you'll see about halfway down that chart, the U.S. large-cap equity is represented by the S&amp;P 500. So 500 large U.S. companies, generally household names like Nike, Microsoft, Tesla. You can see finished the year up 15.16%. That year-to-date number as of June 30th of 6.2% is now 11.5% to the positive. So nice continuation of the rally in the domestic stock market. And then don't forget, there are about 45 countries outside the U.S. with an investable stock market. That's the second line from the bottom, the ACQ or All Country World Index minus the United States. So think Canada, Mexico, Poland, Brazil. For the year, up 17.7%. The year-to-date of 17.9% as of quarter end is now 21.9%. So up almost 22% year-to-date, driven mostly by a weakening dollar. And so it's not a great time to be traveling overseas, it's a phenomenal time to be an American investor overseas. So nice returns out of the domestic and international stock markets and okay out of the bond market. But a lot of times boring is good for bond investors, you know, sometimes boring is attractive. Flip ahead to the next section, page 12. This is the 457 and the 401A combined. You can see, again, just to repeat, to punctuate John's point, total plan assets as of quarter end, just under $650 million combined. Moving to the middle left under plan notes, we do have a fund replacement and a search document to present in the International Value Asset Class. I use that in air quotes because the incumbent has drifted from value closer to core, if not growth. We also had a discussion around the mutual fund version of the T-Roe Price Target Date Funds moving to the Collective Investment Trust. That's going to happen in a couple of weeks. Paperwork has been signed, and so we do see a slight reduction in the cost of the Target Date Funds anticipated here towards the middle of September. From a governance standpoint, we did update the investment policy statement at the last meeting, but we also, on the agenda, have a draft charter and fee policy for discussion. And then upcoming conferences, we do have the NAGDA Conference coming up at the end of September, that's in San Diego. We also have a fiduciary consulting group slash HIAS group fiduciary boot camp, if you will, in Denver on October 22nd. And so just something to keep in mind as the invitations come out. And then rounding out that page, you'll see the bottom chart, the MFS Mid-Cap Growth. This is a fund that invests in high-quality companies. We thought was going to come around. You can see under the quarter notes in the middle, the performance is in compliance as of this quarter, which is good news, but the investment policy statement has language that says it should be in compliance for two consecutive quarters. So hopefully at the next meeting, we can remove that fund from watch. And then as we move into the Vanguard International Value, this is a fund that's giving us a lot of discomfort. The three sub-advisors of that fund have not executed or performed very well at all, and we'll talk about that, and our recommendation is to replace that particular product. And then DFA Real Estate Securities retain the watch status on that particular fund. Flip, yeah?
Question on the DFA, isn't that the one we adopted not long ago?
It was added to the plan in January and then almost immediately underperformed. We think there's some short-term disconnect given where it's investing, but we don't think that it's going to be a bad decision or any long-term concerns. Flipping ahead to page 13, and I think it goes back to your request at the last meeting, we do have the fund performance of the 457 on the bottom half in the navy blue columns over different time periods. We do have some different indexes representing different portfolios, and it was asked at the last meeting to potentially add 100% equity just for comparison's sake. And you'll see that light blue on the far right, that's the Russell 3000. And so again, that was added to these reports at your request, so thank you for that. You can see the plan on a weighted basis returned just under 7%. It's 6.88% for the quarter. A little bit more muted, if you remember, first quarter was relatively weak compared to the second quarter, that year-to-date of 5.52%. And then the 1, 3, and 5 years are fairly impressive, 10.65%, obviously annualized because it's a one-year, but 11.58% and 8.99% annualized over the 3 and 5 year. On pages 14 and 15, these are the investment options. And then speaking of adding, you'll see on the top of page 14, that federal money market managed by Vanguard, that was added about a year ago, excuse me, two years ago, November 2023. You can see just under $9 million moving there with interest rates at about 4.5%, relatively attractive at a conservative basis. So some money moving there, not a ton, but just under $10 million. And then about three-quarters of the way down on page 14, that Vanguard, excuse me, the Fidelity International Index was added about a year ago, July of 2024. Not a huge uptake in there, about $1.5 million in the 457 plan. Flip ahead to page 18. Nice plan growth over the last several years. On page 18, you can see back in 2020, just under $500 million. Hit a relatively high water market, 2021, at $540 million. And then thanks to the retrenchment in the markets, both bond and stock market, huge falloff in 2022, back down to $465 million, but then at the end of the quarter, just under $600 million in the 457. So growth rate of about $100 million. And the bottom third, you'll see the chart on the second line. Again, this goes back to Brenda's point, the point we've been making for the last several years. The plan has exhibited significant net negative cash flow. We thought we would stem it with the addition of the Vanguard Money Market Fund where people were voting with their dollars to chase higher yields. It could very well be chasing an annuity-like product, but nonetheless, you can see the parentheses represent net negative cash flow year in and year out. The nice thing is, second line from the bottom, significant growth rate in participants. Way back in 2020, there was 6,249 participants as of quarter end, just under 76.50. And then the 401A program, similar to John, just be very, very brief. You can see on page 19, the weighted performance over different time periods. Again, the navy blue column is a weighted performance of the 401A program. On the bottom portion of page 21, at the end of the chart, you can see the forfeiture account just over $80,000. So just something to be mindful of from an accounting standpoint. And then the plan growth on page 24, a similar trend as the 457, but obviously different asset size, growing from $23 million at the end of 2020 to just over $35 million at the end of the second quarter. And then almost to the one, the number of participants staying pat at about 145. Flipping ahead to the fee section on page 33. Here's where we track the different types of fees that participants pay. Going back to 2020, you'll see a column on the middle left of page 33. The gray portion, or the biggest portion, is the investment cost. This is what the participants pay the fund managers, 37 basis points. That navy blue portion is what the committee slash plan can use for legitimate expenses. And then the orange portion is what Nationwide collects as their revenue requirement. And you can see 46 basis points all in in 2020, down to 39. You can see the investment cost went from 37 to about 33. The plan budget went from 3.4 to 3.5, so relatively static. And then the revenue requirement dropped fairly significantly from 5.6 to 2.25. And then I mentioned the Collective Investment Trust. So if you flip ahead to page 34 towards the bottom, top of page 35, those T-Roe Price Target Date Funds, currently the average is 41 basis points. Each vintage has a difference, but the average is 41. When those move into the CIT or Collective Investment Trust, that 41 drops to 37. So there is a bit of savings. From a dollar standpoint, that drop in expense across both plans is about $75,000 a year. So nice direction there. Then I talked about the accounting of the record-keeping fee. So you can see the record keeper fee towards the middle of page 35. That 2.25 rounding up is about $135,000. And then that 3.5 basis points that the plan can use is about $210,000. And that's annualized, we break it down by the quarter as well as per participant. But I think a similar chart, but a little bit more beneficial, would be on page 39. This is to the dollar what the plan is collecting. It's almost like an old-school savings account where every quarter, you have a beginning balance, you have the contributions, net flow going in, any growth, and then any distributions, and then the ending balance. And so again, we work with the plan as well as Nationwide to track this and report on it so that the committee, the plan administrator, staff, anyone can see what is in this bucket that you can use for plan-related expenses. Questions, comments on that? The report?
Well, it looks really positive, where over the last five years, we have more participants every year, the fees are going down, and people are making money. So I think in all metrics, it looks really solid. I may have missed it, what was that distribution in the second quarter of 2005 for the $300,000?
Page 39?
Page 39?
We report on it, we don't track the rationale, so I'm looking over...
So due to some staff turnover, the administrative charges hadn't been pulled out each year, and so we were doing some catch-up there, so that's what that was.
So in a way, it should have spread out, but it wasn't, so it looks...
It looks...
It looks like an outlier for catching up. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, is there anything else that you wanted to go over on the report?
On that section, no.
Okay.
Keep moving?
Yep.
Okay.
So next, I think it is the international value asset class discussion.
Correct. So there is one fund on the menu that was slotted, or at least chosen, for its investment strategy, A, investing in international markets, or those countries that I talked about, like Poland, China, Russia, et cetera. But it also slanted more towards the value side. In the smaller report in front of you, I do want to set the stage by addressing my use of air quotes for the international value class earlier. So take a look at page seven. On the bottom portion, how this report and this page specifically is laid out, is you have four primary colored shapes. You also have a gray circle and a black circle. Those are the peer group as well as the index. But let's focus on not just the primary colored shapes, but that orange or rust, let's call it rust, triangle. That's the incumbent. As I said, it was hired, and initial strategy was around international value, but you can see, given the sector rotation and the stocks that it buys, it's moving more towards the growth sector, meaning that it's overweight technology, underweight financials. And in talking to the three sub-advisors, so Vanguard does not manage this, it's Spruce Grove, Lazard, and Arga, those are the three sub-advisors. There's no real concern over this style drift with them, and there's no intention of moving back to a true value manager. So that's one bit of our cause for severe discomfort. But flip back to page five. And so I'll set the stage where, again, our recommendation is to replace Vanguard International Value. In this document, we have three somewhat high-quality or potential replacement candidates. One is managed by DFA or Dimensional Fund Advisors, the other Dodge &amp; Cox, and then the third one is Hartford International Value. Hartford also uses one sub-advisor, and it's Wellington, a very conservative, DC-friendly manager. But DFA, Dodge &amp; Cox, and Hartford are all very, very good possible replacement candidates if the committee were to choose to terminate Vanguard and map those assets to a international value manager. On page five, the top third are peer group rankings. So over different time periods, over the short term as well as the long term, Morning Star takes all international value managers and sorts them by performance. So you can see for the second quarter of 2025, all the way over 10 years, and then rounding out the center to right are different calendar years. These numbers are peer group rankings expressed as percentiles, meaning they'll always be from 1 to 100, and 1 is better than 100. Anything below median or 50th percentile is going to show in red. Anything above is going to show in black. So you can see Vanguard International hasn't been performing very well. This is the second reason that's giving us pause and rationale to terminate, again, because they're not performing in line, and their style drift has no basis of correction. You see DFA has struggled over the short term, over the one and three-year, and near-term is below median, but over five-year, upper quartile, and very, very close to upper quartile over 10 years. Dodge &amp; Cox also had a weak year-to-date, but also a weak three-year. But you can see, five-year, 31st percentile, 48th over 10-year, and then Hartford, managed by Wellington, upper quartile over the one and the three-year, and upper decile over the five and the 10. These are peer group rankings expressed as percentiles. The middle portion are absolute returns minus the investment cost. So in essence, the performance net of fees. I think there's a lot of data points on this middle part, so I like to focus on the bottom. Essentially, it's if the fund beat the benchmark, again, still using the performance, but if the fund beat the benchmark over the same periods, it's going to show in black font. If the fund underperformed the benchmark, again, the ACWE XUS value, it's going to show in red font with the parentheses. And you'll see Vanguard International, short of this quarter, has underperformed the benchmark or the appropriate index over the short term as well as the long term. DFA has underperformed over the one-year, but has beat the benchmark over the three, five, and 10. Dodge &amp; Cox, similar to the chart right above it, has struggled over the three years, did not beat the benchmark, but it did in the, over the three-year, but it did over the five and the 10. And then Hartford has beat the benchmark over the different time periods, except for, and now I'm moving into the calendar years, except for 2024 and 2020. On page six, if you flip ahead, I want to focus on the risk-adjusted returns, or at least a scatter plot of risk and return. So on the top part of page six, what we do on the vertical axis, which is on the left-hand side, is over five years, how did the fund perform? On the horizontal axis, which is at the bottom center, is standard deviation. And standard deviation is one measure of risk, and it tracks the volatility or wiggle of each investment option. Now, our goal is to get in the upper-left, basically maximizing return without taking on much risk. Since this is a international fund, it's not going to get close to that. There's going to be significant volatility, given where it's investing, and that's where you see the shapes on the upper-right. But what we're looking to do is get as close to the upper-left as possible. And so you can see, back to my point, the two circles, the index and the peer group. You can see the blue square, which is DFA, and you can also see the orange square, which is Hartford. That's what we call the efficient frontier. Then there's two shapes that are a little bit lower and a little bit more risk. So there actually is a little bit more volatility without getting paid for it. In fact, it's underperforming. You'll notice that rust-colored triangle, which is the incumbent, as well as Dodge &amp; Cox International. So those are not on the efficient frontier. That's just one chart to take a look at, to think about the conceptualization of terminating and moving on. And then taking a look at the bottom-left, the Sharpe Ratio. Essentially, this is the risk-free return, so the return minus the yield of the 10-year Treasury divided by standard deviation. Said another way, we want a higher number there. And you'll see, the highest number is at 0.89 from Hartford. That shows very well, followed by the DFA, not as great, but 0.8, which is pretty good. And then the Dodge &amp; Cox at 0.66, and then the incumbent at 0.51. Again, very logical compared to the chart up above. And then rounding out that, you'll see the index as well as the peer group or the average. We also take a look at upside-downside capture. In strong markets, how do the funds perform or participate? In weak markets, how do the funds perform or participate? And you can see a lot of volatility with the green, 115% on the upside, but 122% on the downside, a little bit more with the orange or Hartford. But you can see participates at 102% on the downside. And then a little bit more muted on that DFA, only 108% on the upside, but 100% on the downside. And then now the incumbent, not much participation at 102%, but 118% in weak markets. And then we already went over the chart on page seven, and then I will turn to the next section where we talk about fees. On page eight, the top half of that chart are the four funds. The incumbent Vanguard International recently dropped their fee from 39 to 36 basis points. You can see your 0.36%. If you were to terminate map assets to DFA, it's a little bit more expensive at 38. Dodge &amp; Cox, a little bit more expensive at 52. And Hartford International Value, a little or a lot more expensive at 81 basis points. So I'll pause there, see if anybody has questions on this section or the report.
Vincent, real quickly, I may have missed it. Was there a table in there that kind of had the returns net of fees?
Yes. The return net of fee chart is back on page five. So all of those performance numbers, the middle is net of fees, the returns relative to the benchmark, the bottom third, also returns net of fees.
Thank you. It's consistently tracking to be one of the better funds, even though the fees are the most expensive, looking at fees with funds, it still comes out top to me.
So do we give Vincent some more minutes to go through his presentation, or should we just ask him for his recommendation now?
I took that as a question for the broader group, but you're looking at me. Hartford is a well-diversified portfolio. I do look at the asset size. I also look at the number of securities. The incumbent has 185 stocks in its portfolio. DFA has almost 4,000. Dodge &amp; Cox has 87, and Hartford has 227. Our recommendation is to terminate Vanguard and map the assets to Hartford. Our second choice, if the committee is cost-conscious, is DFA.
Do I see somebody forming a motion there?
Yeah, I mean, again, we are fee-conscious, but again, you do get what you pay for. And I think, I think the table, table on page five does lend itself to, for us to terminate, and then who the funds over to Hartford there. And I'll make that informal motion.
I'll second it.
Have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Vincent, you again.
One of the conversations we had over the last couple quarters was around formalizing the committee structure as well as titles. Certainly, there is a chair, but I think maybe nine, 12 months ago, there was a situation where there was no chair. And so then it was, well, what if we had some policies around the committee and the structure? So what we did was working with staff over the last quarter or two is develop a draft charter. In my mind, the draft charter serves a couple functions. One is, it formalizes the structure, but it also blesses, from a county standpoint, the delegation to the plan administrator as well as the committee to act and make recommendations and make decisions. And so this is an initial draft. It is our step in using best practice with our other county clients on what this document looks like. But we have a firm belief, no pun intended, that this is your document. So our job is to present this and for you to review it and make changes to it where you see appropriate, and have a discussion around the structure, the election, the membership, the decision-making process, all of that sort of thing. Now, with that said, and I'll be quiet, is because when the county decided to offer the 401 and the 457, it adopted fiduciary status. That can never be relinquished. They can certainly delegate that authority, but they'll always keep it. And so back to my point that this is your document, technically, this is a board document that says, due to a resolution or whatever, we formed the committee, the structure of the plan administrator. And so it would be a board document that the committee uses to give it authority to meet and to act and to make every other decision.
And if I could just add, I think, you know, when I came into this role, I found that there was some inconsistencies in some of the record-keeping, where it came to how this committee was formed and how it had moved and changed. And as questions came up, we really didn't have a document kind of to go to. So I do think that it will be helpful for future HR directors and committee members to have a little bit better understanding of how things work in the absence of participants, as there's an alternate or a delegate that can attend for the committee members, as well as the staff, you know, that's in HR, to make sure that they're, you know, kind of administering this committee in a way that kind of is consistent moving forward. So I am interested in the committee's comments. I will say, for those of you who don't know, our employee benefits manager resigned last week, and so some of this discussion started, where he was having some of this discussion. It hadn't been really shared with me. So there are probably some things that I would recommend we look at adjusting. And so we can certainly discuss some of those things today. We can take, see if there's anything that this committee feels strongly about, and then the HR team can take that feedback, work on it, and bring it back to our next meeting for more of a final review. So I will say that one of the things I noticed in the membership, it identifies a sheriff's department representative, but that's historically, we've had two participant members who are there, selected through election. And so that I would, I would recommend we retain, because I think it's been a great option to have people who are interested in from whatever department they're working in. So I know with our retirement system, we tend to have a safety member representative, but I think that kind of mirrors that they have two different retirement benefits through the retirement system. And I think also I'd like to add something about the terms for the committee members, for the ones that are elected, obviously, those that are appointed or are there by their role. There's not terms there. And then one other thing that we may want to discuss, historically, in San Joaquin County, the HR director has been considered the plan administrator, and this committee has advised the HR director. But the director has had the ability to make decisions maybe outside of this advisory committee process. So in other counties, and I think Vincent could share, that it's probably more common for them to have, for the committee to be actually be the decision-maker, and where the HR director is a member of the committee, but is not the sole decision-maker. I think that there's been some benefits to that, and administratively, if something needs to happen, you know, I'm authorized technically to make those decisions, or whoever the HR director is. But it may be something this committee wants to consider as we look at this charter as well.
Yeah, I think that was kind of the confusion in the past. I remember sitting on the aviation advisory committee. Again, we were just an advisory committee, but then there was a time here where we had a committee member, a former auditor, that, you know, kind of said, okay, this is what we're, put a motion out there, and it got approved, which was kind of strange for a committee. You would imagine a board would do that, not an advisory committee. I think just going through this list, I think my recommendations in regards to membership, I'd probably name them out, not say the first two members, or, and then, doesn't really address quorum. Luckily, we've been blessed here that, you know, we have pretty good attendance, but you have some committees up and down the state, you know, that just can't get everybody there, so you may want to address that issue. And then, yeah, kind of like what you said, I mean, are we advisory committee, or are we a board? I would imagine if we were a board, we could make motions, and if we were advisory committee, we could say, hey, this is what we advise, and you, you can do whatever you want, you know, as either the HR director or the airport director, he or she can do whatever he wants at that time. So that is kind of confusing on the roles there. And then also the size, sometimes it is good to have a nine, eight, nine-team group. What do you think? Do you think you only need five out of the group or something? I mean, it's something to consider if you're putting this together, so.
I think we've had seven plus an alternate. And so we've considered if we had four, that that was the quorum, and we've, I think we've been able to maintain that. We've been maybe close one time or another, or the alternate did have to participate, but we've always been able to hold the meeting. A larger advisory committee, obviously, you know, input and perspectives are good. It would likely increase some costs as far as education and conferences. Thoughts from the group? And we, who would we look to fill those seats then? If we expanded the numbers on the advisory committee?
Now you got your sheriff, Daisi Nee.
I think if we get it too big, it's just going to get harder. And, you know, if we have more people on the advisory committee, it would just get harder to get anything done. You've been able to meet the quorum almost always, and so I wouldn't say I wouldn't get it any, wouldn't recommend making it any larger. I agree with you, terms, because I know I've looked a few times to try to figure out when, how long is this thing, because I couldn't remember. And whether or not it has to be a safety member or a general, that could be clarified. I think it's a, definitely a good idea to formalize this.
You could always look to SJ Sarah's format, and then kind of modify that, I guess. Yeah.
Any strong feelings one way or the other about the concept of the HR director being the plan administrator and decision-maker, and the committee being advisory to it?
I, I think, because we only meet quarterly, that you need to have some discretion to keep business moving. And I know that gets to be kind of not always clear, so we would need to make sure we're clear on what that is. But if we met more often, then I'd say absolutely not. You know, it shouldn't, you shouldn't have that ability. By meeting quarterly, there, I'm sure there are times when it's like, we've got to move something forward. So I, I think the HR director needs to have some authority.
I, I agree with that. Again, just going off the name of the advisory committee, again, we're just here to advise. Yeah, granted, we have our fiduciary duties, kind of help out, but, yeah, I would say you should have some more authority. And I'm glad it's you, not me.
I, I think just to echo that, too, is, you know, as an advisory, I would hope that if it was something major, that we would, there would be some type of communication that would protect you on decision-making. You know, if nobody knows about it, and something doesn't go right, then it's all on you versus having multiple decision-makers.
I certainly would always keep this advisory committee, and I'm sure all future HR directors would as well.
The only concern would be setting some kind of limit. Like, right now, you're really great at your job, and then Renee is great at SJ Sarah, but we've had at SJ Sarah problems before with the CEO. And so, and then when do you have to wrestle things away? And so I don't know if there's, you know, give the authority over to the HR director position, but then have some caveats if there's performance issues or something else, where we're not stuck, you know, with the Board of Supes needing to act, or if there's a faster method or something like that, right? And it's, and it's easy to think of the fair-weather times with you and Renee Osteren over at SJ Sarah, but what if somebody who's not like the two of you fills the role?
I think, again, there's about, I can't remember the number of counties, but we do have some of the, not that I would ever want to do this, but again, I don't know how we would be able to pull the authority from the HR director without appointing someone else.
I think that would have to be up to Ms. Regalow. Yeah. Basically, she'd have to fire me now. Yeah.
So if I could just get some clarification. So right now, as it sits, we have eight, or is that seven and an alternate?
Seven and one alternate.
Okay. And so we are looking to keep the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, I, I would agree as well. And then I don't have any issues with you being the plan administrator. I think you keep us all, you let us know, and we do meet regularly, so I think we would be fine.
Agreed. And I let Ms. Herman's point about quarterly meetings, you need way more latitude than SJ Sarah, that we have a quarterly, or a monthly trustee meeting. So it's a little bit different ballgame, where anything else is four weeks away from a decision if we really needed it. But it's hard to wait three months if you really need to move on something.
All right. Well, I appreciate everybody's confidence in me, and hopefully, all the future incumbents of the role can hold up to it as well. Any other comments on the charter that you'd like to make before we, the team goes back and does some work on it for your review for the next quarterly meeting?
Just clarification on the membership. Is it seven and one alternate? Let's separate them out?
Yeah.
So, so we know.
Thank you.
Like I said, the, underneath the membership, maybe we shouldn't use the, the first two members, the next three members and stuff, we just kind of cite out their, their title.
Yeah, we can, we'll certainly clarify that section.
This is, this is the first paragraph that are in our, under membership.
Vincent, anything else you think we need to think about?
No, the nice thing is it's, thank you. The, the nice thing is this is not etched in stone. So as best practices evolve, we can always update the charter. So, good, good input.
Thank you. All right. So we will bring that back to the next meeting.
Might, might I recommend you actually put it in the document, that it will be reviewed either every three years or something? Because once it's policy, it will get looked at again, and if you retire, somebody else will have to look at it. Otherwise, it could get very stagnant.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
And it, it will be a board-adopted policy, so that means amendments, this, you know, advisory committee would give input to it, and then the HR director would bring it to the board for adoption, for any changes, so. All right. And then the fee policy?
Again, working with, working with staff on the charter, pardon, the draft charter. We also, in our client list, for fiduciary best practices and process, is having a fee policy. Two things. One is it outlines the legitimate plan-related expenses. So training, participant education, consultant, legal, that's on there. But also, the high-class problem of excess, excess revenue. We do have some committees that build this huge rainy day fund, and that sometimes gets looked askew from legal counsel. And so having a codified process, and when the, that ledger on page whatever, 37, gets too big compared to the budget, that's when we'll start having a discussion around either returning a portion to participants, creating a fee holiday, or possibly lowering the fee. And just having some flexibility, but within guardrails with the document. This is just a draft fee policy. Sometimes we have some counties that have half of their plan budget, and they give money back. Others, it's three times. And so really, whatever you think is reasonable in terms of an excess, there's language in there on the second page of that draft fee policy.
Any questions, comments from the advisory committee? This is really exciting stuff, I know.
I actually appreciate it. You know, it's something you needed, something that needed to happen a long time ago, and never finally doing it, so that's good, to have all these documents here, so.
I did not have any recommended changes on the fee policy. I don't know if the group does. Does our council have any suggestions? Okay. All right. So then we can have council review, and we'll bring it back along with the charter at our next quarterly meeting. If that's agreeable to the group. All right. So I know we're running a little late, so we'll try to speed through the rest of this here. Upcoming conferences.
Already mentioned those.
You mentioned those.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so Kay, I'll skip that.
And I do believe we have several people who'll be attending the NAGDA conference, unfortunately. I will be in France, so I will not be there, but. Exactly. But you just said it was not a good time to go traveling abroad, so there we go.
It's always good to travel to France.
All right. And then we did want to just mention, we are, we initiated the process for our committees, the advisory committee election. So notices have gone out to eligible members for self-nomination. And then, once we have that information out, ballots will go out for employees to identify. And I believe it is Ms. Herman's spot, and the alternate spot as well, are the ones that are up for election this year. Any questions on that? Okay. And then our next meeting is scheduled for Thanksgiving. So I think this has come up once before. We talked about that we probably would like to schedule around it, so I'm not sure if there is a preference from the group for the day before, to do it the Wednesday, or if they prefer to look at it the week before, the week after, on a Thursday?
I would like the week before or week after. Just during the week, you know, everybody is taking that week off, so.
I concur.
Is Cal Pelra the week before? Okay. Yeah. So the, several of our, I'm guessing, am I the only one who'll be at the Cal Pelra conference? Council will be too. And, and some of our consultants as well.
Doodle survey or something?
Yes. So we'll send out a survey email to find, find a date that works for everybody. And we will, again, have, we'll notice it as a special meeting, just because it won't be on the set Thursday, but, and I'm sure everybody will enjoy Thanksgiving with their families instead of trying to be here. Yeah.
Is there any issue with the first week of October, the third through seventh? Or third through sixth, perhaps?
In October or November?
November, I'm sorry, November.
The November, the week of November 3rd to 7th, would that be a time that's available?
Fonse and I have a board meeting that Friday, so.
I know. Okay. Well, we will look for maybe those first two weeks in November to see if we can find a date, so that we don't have to wait too long. As long as that will not create problems for, for Nationwide, for you guys doing the reports, are you okay with that, if it ends up a couple weeks earlier?
Yeah, we need about five weeks after we're in.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, we will, we will work on that. I've lost my agenda. Is there anything else on our agenda? Any other comments from the advisory committee? All right. Thank you very much for, for everything today, and we will identify the next meeting, and I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.